Good evening. I'd like to bring the August meeting of the Inner Borough Board of School Directors to order. Ms. Caldwell, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Eckert?
Pardon me, Mr. Eckert is, can't attend tonight because he is out of town for a work-related event.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. De Batista?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Here.
Mr. Razzie?
Here.
Mrs. Hager?
Here.
Ms. Krajewski, may we have the invocation, please?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the inner borough school district. And grant to this board and their deliberations this evening, the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with the greatness of its own.
Ms. Krajewski, do we have any citizens who'd like to speak?
Yes, Mrs. Hager, Mr. Zerdy Dobie.
Zerdy Dobie from Tinnicum. Number eight. What is the, have they voted on it yet, or are you voting first?
One moment. Is that the contract?
Yes.
That has been approved by their membership, and it's tentative until if we agree to it tonight.
And what kind of increase are you offering to them?
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. It's not that we're offering, it's what's been accepted. And I think the average is, over the five years, is about 2%.
2% per year?
Average, yes.
And last month, I asked about the distribution of monies from the airport agreement in the guaranteed tax fixed payment of $1.8 million. And I asked you to address the issue because it's going to, it's listed in here as divided equally between the township, the school district, and the county, which I believe is unfair. And I asked you to send a letter to address that issue. Did you send any correspondence to re, look at this issue?
No, we did not. That agreement has been signed by all the parties involved. We did not and will not.
You will not? Okay, so here it is. Eight hundred, more than $818,000 that you, President Hager, as well as Mr. Harris, Mrs. De Batista, Mrs. Krajewski, Mr. Razzie, Mr. Phelps, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Evans, and my representative, Mr. Eckert. Every single year, this school district loses 800, more than $818,000 because of what you just said, that you will not revisit this issue. Over the course of the 20 years, that is more than $16 million. So just the fact that you will not look at it again and readdress it is problematic for you.
Mr. Dobie, I question those figures.
Well, you can question anything you want.
As can you.
Well, I'm just telling you that at the, at the millage rate of 32.9362, which is what you have currently, the amount for the school district would be $1,439,748 of that 1.8 million. And the township would get 186,000, but they're going to get 600,000. And the county would get 237, but they're going to get more, 600,000. That's the, that's the, the amount of monies that you are giving away, depriving the inner borough children of much-needed money. Now, I can't understand why you, or any of the other people that I mentioned, but Mr. Razzie, I do understand why he would be opposed to this, because he's a township, Tinnicum Township employee. So he has a dual loyalty. And so-
Mr. Dobie, he is not an employee of Tinnicum Township.
Well, let me just show you, and I could read it to you, and I, I think I will read it to you.
That, that is not an agenda item. Would you like to address any other agenda items?
That's exactly what I'm addressing, Mrs., President Hager. And if you will allow me just a few seconds to get this. Item number 12. The March 2011 meeting of the Tinnicum Township Board of Commissioners. Number 14, on number 14. Hire of alternate officer, Brian Razzie. So Mr. Razzie is a township, Tinnicum Township employee, has a dual loyalty, and I can understand why he would oppose giving that-
President Hager, can I have a point of order?
Yes, Mr. Razzie.
Thank you. Well, I generally don't like to break format and comment during this time. That is completely wrong. I am not an employee of Tinnicum Township. I have never been an employee of Tinnicum Township. I am an appointed official in Tinnicum Township and have been for the last six years. Have not received any compensation from Tinnicum Township until the last few months, where I've been paid as a private contractor to train one of their employees. Thank you.
Well, either you're lying, or they're lying. This is their agenda, Mr. Razzie, so I go by their agenda.
Mr. Dobie, may we talk about issues that have to do on our agenda this evening for the school district?
It is an issue. There is a, there is a possible conflict of interest with, with the school board director. That's, that's the point I'm trying to make in this issue with the, the airport agreement and this, this amount of money that you are not allowing to. Just one additional thing that has direct relating to you. Tinnicum Township, in their July meeting, number 14, purchase a vacant property. The Tinnicum Township wants to purchase an additional property in Tinnicum Township and take it off the tax rolls. The amount of money that you are going to lose, because if, if they do purchase it, you do not get the tax money from it, is going to be approximately $2,000 a year. So they're buying all this property.
Which is, it's their prerogative. There's nothing that we can do about it, so I, I don't know why-
I know that. I know that you can't do anything about that. But what you can do something about is the airport agreement. That's why I'm bringing it to your attention. If $800,000 is no, nothing to you, and that you're going to do what was reported in the Daily Times, Tinnicum Township to rise, I mean taxes to rise at the inner borough school district 1.5%. That's what was reported by Courtney Alco in the Daily Times on June the 22nd. Now, you just raised our taxes. With that $800,000, that headline would be taxes to rise 0.5%. So that's, that's the issue with me. You know, if you don't want to do anything about it, it's to your shame. That's the problem, and you should address it, and you should seek to have it adjusted. Thank you.
Maybe go on to motion, the next motion, Ms. Krajewski.
Motion that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the inner borough Board of School Directors held on July 15, 2015 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Ms. Krajewski?
Motion that the following minutes of the special meeting of the inner borough Board of School Directors held on July 27, 2015 be approved.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Our solicitors report. Mrs. Serini?
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. This month, our office has been working on consulting on personnel matters, preparing for district in services for your staff, reviewing contracts, and also consulting on special education matters.
Thank you, Mrs. Serini. Our next motion, Ms. Krajewski, please.
Motion that the attached treasures report for the month ending July 31, 2015 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments by board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0.
Motion that fund dispersments in the amount of $10,386,808.28 be approved.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments by board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Do we have any correspondence, Ms. Krajewski?
No, Mrs. Hager.
For committee reports, for finance, although we did not have a finance committee meeting in August, I just wanted to let the taxpayers of this district know that we are keeping an eye on the state budget, or the failure, the lack of a state budget, in terms of how it will affect inner boroughs. So we are cognizant of it, we are preparing for it. So I just wanted to assure you that we're working on it. Mr. Eckert is not here, nor did we have a GBO meeting. Mrs. Floyd, do you have a legislative update?
We didn't have a meeting, however, there's been some things going on. Just the other day, Tuesday, well, yesterday, there was a press conference at William, William Penn Ardmore Avenue School. And we had various representatives from different schools, school board members, as well as, obviously, the press. And it was a discussion about fair funding. And a lot of good points were brought out. And in fact, in the newspaper, there was a newspaper article, which was, I thought, a good article. I wasn't quoting exactly right, but the point was there. The fact is, is that when they were talking about what will happen with schools if, in fact, the budget doesn't get passed and we don't get paid our funding. And different points were made. One director said that Bethlehem School District was going to withhold on paying their charter school tuition, 70% of the tuition. And then another director was talking about how some schools are going to dip into their fund balance. And watching the faces of the reporters, I could tell that they weren't getting it about the, the fund balance. So that's when I told them that this isn't, you know, frivolous money, slush, you know, slush fund or anything like that. This was money that is usually set up, specifically our district, for emergency situations, capital improvement, that type of thing, that it is not used for our general budget. And that we have to be careful. Any school district that, that does use their fund balance has to be careful because we're also rated, as far as our credit rating. If we go below a certain percentage of what our total budget, budget is, we will get a poor rating, and we won't even be able to borrow money if an emergency came up. Or, you know, if this keeps going on and we need more money. So with that said, I think they got a better understanding of what is going on, not just by my one comment, but by everybody that was there. The point is, is we have to keep staying on top of the legislators to get a budget, to, the funding issues, the charter school, you know, reform things, the pension reform. All of this has to be addressed, and that's part of the budget. And, you know, it's going on too long. So we have to be, I've said it before, we have to become advocates. We have to contact our legislators. If you need information, if you, you know, want to help out, the website, I believe, has been updated with the proper representatives that we have. They have to know. This needs to be addressed. The budget has to be finalized. We did ours. We'd be penalized if we didn't do ours. They have to do the budget, and they have to, in doing the budget, they have to look at these important issues. Our students are, not just ours, throughout the state of Pennsylvania, the schools are hurting. And we can't cut anymore. As one, as one superintendent said, "There is no more cutting. We can't cut." You know? So with that said, that went on the other day. And also, I'm bringing it to your attention that Resolution Number 13, it's for me to go to the delegate, the PSBA Delegate Assembly, and will be adopting the official PSBA platform and approve bylaw changes and receive official reports. So I'm looking forward to going to Harrisburg if my colleagues approve this, because, once again, your face being out there, and your comments, and, you know, picking up information that can be shared with, you know, others, with our community, with my board, it's very important. And to have representation at these type of things is very important. So that's all I have to say for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Evans?
Yes, as there was no meeting, I have no report. Our first meeting should be at the beginning of November.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board met on August 5th. It was approved, the appointment of the DC Director of Special Programs. It was also approved, P, blah, let's try this again, approved the pre-K counts grant agreement between DCIU and Head Start and the Delaware County Early Learning Center. Let's see. Approved and to accept the grant from the Pennsylvania Office of Child Development and Early Learning. Also approved account to continue a contract with Chester Crozier Medical Center to provide two mental health counselors at TCA. And lastly, also approved a contract with ACA Track to provide healthcare reform compliance management services under the Affordable Care Act. For more information, you can always go to www.dciu.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Ms. Krajewski, can we go to motion eight, please?
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the collective bargaining agreement between the inner borough school district and the inner borough education support professionals for the time period of July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Before I ask for the rest of the board, we're delighted that this has been settled. It's been a long time that we are negotiating this, but we are very happy that this part of our agreement with our employees is settled. And I thank Mr. Razzie, Mr. Priscilla, Mrs. Riley for their efforts in bringing this finally to fruition. So it's been moved and seconded. Do any other board members have comments or questions?
I have one.
Mr. Phelps?
I just want to thank Mr. Razzie. I know this was a lot of work and a lot of your time alone in these negotiations, and this board does appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hearing no other comments, may we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Motion passes, 8-0. Can we move on to motion nine, please, Ms. Krajewski?
Motion that the following personnel actions be approved as listed, beginning on page two, ending on page nine.
Second.
It's particularly long motion for the time of year. It's pretty typical of our personnel needs being fulfilled. It has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments on motion nine?
Comment?
Yes. Ms. De Batista?
Yes, like you said, there are a lot of appointments and reclassification, so certainly welcome to all the new staff, teachers, and people moving to different positions. But I wanted to just draw some attention to Mr. Nicholas Wood, who was a PE and health teacher at Tinnicum School for quite a few years, and was definitely adored by the students and the parents. And he is moving to the Assistant Principal of Prospect Park School. So on behalf of the Tinnicum community, we just wanted to wish you well on your new career path. Good luck, and we know you're going to be awesome. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. De Batista. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I, there's a lot of names that I recognize of new hires, or as Ms. De Batista mentioned, reassignments, reclassifications. But I too would like to say, in regards to Nick Wood being the new Assistant Principal at Prospect Park School, I've known him over the years through my granddaughters because he was also a teacher, a PE teacher at Norwood School. And speaking of being well-respected and well-liked and what have you, you have at least two young ladies that are going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other comments or questions, all those in favor of motion nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. We're on motion 10, on page nine.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Curriculum and Instruction be approved as listed, beginning on page nine, ending on page 10.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Ms. Krajewski?
Motion that the following items from the Office of Special Education and Pupil Services be approved as listed, beginning on page 10, ending on page 11.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. We're on motion 12, on page 11.
Motion that the following items be approved from the Office of Facilities as listed, beginning on page 11, ending on page 12.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Comment? Mrs. Floyd?
Yes, I would like to recognize Mr. Walhoff, who's been overseeing all these various projects that have been going on over the summer. I, it's amazing, it is amazing how much has been accomplished in a short period of time. And I, I think him and his staff need to be acknowledged. Just like when we go to do the walkthrough, you're going to find that the custodians have all of our buildings up to, up to snuff and ready to go. And I think it should, it should be recognized what a good job he has done. I, I told him, even the contractors and the subcontractors have been very pleasant, very cooperative with the neighbors, the concrete work that was done. I mean, everything is looking really, really nice, and I want to thank him personally. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of motion 12, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Motion 13, please.
Motion that the Board of, that the Board of Directors approve Mrs. Phyllis Floyd to attend the Pennsylvania School Board Association Voting Delegate Assembly on October 13, 2015, costs not to exceed $180 for traveling expenses, to be paid from the district funds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments or questions from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Motion 14, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached contract with Kid Stop Before and After School Program for the 2015-2016 school year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Motion 15, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve McGraw-Hill Education's price quote for eighth grade social studies texts and materials, Discovering Our Past: The History of the United States, early years, 2016 copyright, in the amount of $23,038.10 to be paid from the Keystone Opportunity Funds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments?
I have a comment to make. We, this is, one, a purchase that we're making for our classroom, so that our teachers have the necessary materials to make sure that our students are receiving the information, and these textbooks are aligned with the curriculum and with the demands from the Pennsylvania Education Department. It has been an ongoing, let's say, expenditure that we have been doing this. And I thank the teachers for their time in, in trying to, of course, choose a textbook that would be best for our kids.
Any other questions or comments for motion 15? Ms. Caldwell, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista? Yes. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Motion 16, please.
Point of order?
Yes, Mr. Razzie.
Sorry, Mrs. Hager. I apologize in reviewing the agenda. Motion number 14, which was the contract with Kid Stop, we failed to do a roll call vote-
Okay.
-which is required on a contract. So at this point-
All right, let's go back and redo that.
Can we, I'd like, one second while I confer with the solicitor.
Madam President, out of abundance of caution, I'd like to make a motion to rescind the motion number 14 that was previously voted on. And as abundance of caution, I'd like a second for that.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to rescind motion 14. Questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0. Any, any no votes? Okay, and let's go back to 14 again, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached contract with Kid Stop Before and After School Program for the 2015-2016 school year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Just to inform our taxpayers, this is, we revisited this contract. It is an after-school, I believe it's before and after-school program that is sent Glenn Alden, so it's simply a renewal with some changes. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mrs. Krajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
Which now takes us to motion 16, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the State Audit Response Package Resolution for the fiscal years ending June 30, 2009 through June 30, 2012.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments about motion 16? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 8-0. Any old business before the board? New business? Mrs. Riley?
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. I would like to echo what Mrs. De Batista and Mrs. Floyd said in welcoming Mr. Wood to the administrative team. I've known Nick since he was hired 13 years ago, and I'm very excited to have him on our team. He is well-respected among the staff and the students, and I know that he's going to be a wonderful addition to Prospect Park. So welcome, Nick. We're very happy to have you. Back-to-school packets, which will include your teacher's homeroom and, which will include your child's homeroom, and teacher assignment will be mailed out on Friday, so please look for that in the mail. That's to all students from the community school and the kindergarten. If you do not receive this information by Wednesday, August 25th, please contact your child's school. As many of you have seen, if you've been around the Prospect Park and administration building and kindergarten, we've been under major construction to expand our playgrounds and parking, and to develop new parking areas and drop-off and pickup. So we, hopefully, that is going to be done on time. I know it will, as Mr. Walhoff has been working very hard and has done an excellent job. In those packets for Prospect Park and the kindergarten academy, there are new procedures. We're asking parents to please read through them and be patient with us as we work to ensure that we get things off to a good start, and that we're making sure that your children are coming into the building and getting picked up safely and efficiently. And that's it. Enjoy the last few days of summer, as we'll be starting school in a few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Any comments from board members?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes. If you also drive around the district, you'll see the various teams are out and practicing. The fields are in shape and lined and what have you. are out and practicing. The fields are in shape and lined and what have you. And, uh, I have to commend the commitment and the dedication of these, uh, athletes because it's been pretty hot the last couple of weeks. And, uh, anyway, I wish them luck in their, uh, games, their upcoming games. And, uh, I also would like to make a, a brief comment in regards to Mr. Dobie, Dobie's, uh, comment. Um, I didn't, I realize that, um, everyone is entitled to an opinion, but someone's opinion doesn't always mean that it's factual. And unfortunately, some of the things that Mr. Dobie had said is not factual. And because he wasn't at the meetings, because he doesn't know what went into, uh, this settlement, unfortunately, he can make a suggestion. He could come up with, um, amounts of monies that, um, he thinks were throwing away. But had we not done what we did, there would have been a lot more money we would have lost. So, therefore, we're not cheating the kids in this district one cent. We did what we felt was right. And, um, I hope at some point in time, he'll come to realize that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. On Tuesday, September 8th, a finance committee meeting with a GBO meeting immediately following will be held at 6 o'clock PM in the boardroom in the Administration Building. Our next work, work session of the inner borough Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the Administration Building on Monday, September 14th, 2015, at 6:30. And the next regular monthly public meeting of the inner borough Board of School Directors will be convened in the auditorium of the high school on Wednesday, September 16th, 2015, at 7 o'clock PM. Uh, have a wonderful beginning of the school year for all of our students, teachers, and staff and administrators. Meeting is adjourned.